Yeah, that is better. So glad to see that because I had a client sit with me a couple of weeks ago. And she's not completely involved in anything, but she likes to watch, couldn't watch last week, she could get it. But she says, I'm getting so frustrated. She goes, a bunch of us, we don't even want to go attend anymore to hear anybody. So I'm so glad to see you guys did that. That's awesome.
We're still, still working on a few other things. I'm just waiting for Mr. Brady and Mr. Senior to come back in. So we can open up our, we open our public session. All right. So before we get started, I was just mentioning that now that everyone is here, we have some enhanced audio. Here we all have microphones. We do have the ability, if you see it's green, that means we're on. This way we're not handing around a single microphone as we enter cold flu and COVID season.
You all heard that?
So Mr. Brady's on. We also have the big screen on it. It's a little, little lighter, but so it could be easier. The reason this screen is turned this way is because the camera is there and is facing us. We're also still talking about perhaps reconfiguring how we set up in this room to make it even more accessible and easier for people watching and for us. It's kind of awkward having all of us, you know, in a straight line here. I don't always see everyone. So we're moving forward. Anything else on that? Chris? No? Okay. And if you've seen the news today, there's a tragic school shooting in Appalachia High School in Georgia. Middle high school in Georgia, there are four deceased, two students and two teachers and over 30 injuries. And so I'd like to have a moment of silence for the victims, their families and everyone involved. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. Is anyone here for a public comment? Okay, please come up. You know, that would be great. Thank you. I believe that microphone is on, so.
Does it sound like it's on? Oh, right here.
Is it green?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Nate, Nate and Abby's, please.
Caitlin Ferry, 1903 Avalon Drive. I live in the Preserve. And I just want to talk more about kind of the, the culture of fear and intimidation that not only the people in the management office are, you know, trying to, to put on, but kind of their lawyers and they're more like property management team in Boston as a whole. So back in March, I started smelling this smell in my apartment as if someone was smoking in there. And, you know, I went to the management office and told them, and at first, you know, it was a reasonable response, like, okay, well, send an email out to the building and, you know, just kind of let them know, but it continued on. So I went to the management office again, and that's when sort of they tried to, to gaslight me. Saying that the, that there's a guy in the building who works at a dispensary. And that's why I'm smelling what I'm smelling and I, you know, it's coming through my vents, the smell, it's way too strong to be just off someone's clothes or something. But this culture of gaslighting, just repeating the same thing, trying to make me think that like I was crazy. I had to go above their heads, go to the, a regional property manager. And now this smell, it was a health hazard, a safety hazard, a fire hazard. And I told them I had allergies and it was a health hazard. They told me someone can come to the apartment, see if they can smell it. And that's when they sent two letters, their lawyers, sent two letters, slipped them under my door. One was banning me from the management and leasing office. And the other one was saying that my claims are false, that I'm harassing these residents supposedly, because I was falsely reporting something, I suppose, and that they wouldn't respond to my complaints anymore. So I just want to make it clear, obviously I, I don't like speaking in public about this and it's taken me a few meetings to actually get up to this point where I can speak in the microphone. And if I don't like it, I, I can only imagine how people are being, other people are being treated, whether it's, you know, older people going into the management office and being gaslighted, people that are more, more vulnerable if they have complaints and issues. I also, I walk my dog around the apartment complex, so I, I'm familiar with lots of people. I talk with lots of people in the apartment complex and I've shown them the letters that I received. And I've heard all sorts of stories about how people are being mistreated. And I just want to say that it's, it's a culture of intimidation and fear. People are scared to report anything, say anything contrary to what the people in the management office or whoever want them to believe. They don't want to work for the residents. They don't want to uphold the leasing agreements that people have signed. So that's why I think that stuff like mandatory, like health inspections for current residents would really benefit the community. And of course, there's all sorts of other action that can be taken by the town, but I just want to make it clear how they're trying to intimidate people and silence people. So that's about all I have to say right now, but thank you.
Caitlin, thank you very much. I appreciate how difficult it is sometimes to come and talk and, and, you know, put your name and address out there. And we've been hearing through Anne Marie and others of some of the trials and tribulations that you all have been going through and we're doing what we can and will continue to stay on this issue for you.
Thank you.
Daryl Best, at 555 Beechwood Street, Cohasset. I want to talk about four things.
You only have a few?
I know, it's very quick.
Okay.
The first one is the town manager review process. I would like for a form also to go out to the community so that the residents can focus on that. The second thing, working on the Town Manager Act. When I went through it, I was absolutely appalled at the fact that there is no oversight to the hiring practice. And I don't want to go through a third problem like we've already had with the Fire Chief. And the other, Fire Chief was one, the Director for the Elders is two. I don't want to see a third. If we have a third, shame on us. The other thing I have is, this makes me think of Bejehu, the Town Hall Working Group. Every time I look at this, I'm saying, this is the same thing over again. They were supposed to have stakeholders from different areas in. And I checked with the one from the petition that went out. None of them are on this committee, which I think is a sin. The other thing is, I don't want to see this town hall go to the Cohasset Cultural Center for anything. I want to keep it as a town hall, and it should stay as a town hall. It's a historic building that needs to stay as a town hall. I just feel that it's redoing stuff that has already been done. And you're looking, from when I reading this, they're looking, you're looking again to buy another building. And I just, that's the impression I get out of this. It's, you're not talking about town hall, you're talking about 41 Highland Street. So you've given the town hall name away. Now it's become an address. And I don't think that's fair to the building, because it is the town hall and it should be treated as a town hall. And my third thing is, I would like to see if you could do something about making the town managers' report more of a town managers in town, not just a saying things about road races and other stuff. I would like to see reports from the different departments in the town in the town managers' report, because that's what I was looking for. And that's not what I'm getting. So shame on us if we can't get this stuff up to what it needs to be.
Okay? Thank you. Okay, no other public comments? Okay, so now, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So Taffey Northnagle, 65B Willwright Farm. I'm here asking you to support the agenda item put forth by Mr. Farag to form a working group of interested citizens to review the Town Manager Act, especially as it relates to the appointments of directors and department heads. This request is made in light of what I and many others consider to be a critical error in judgment by the town manager in his appointment of the new director of the senior center. This appointment was made in direct contradiction to advice from the community, the CEA Board of Directors and his appointed interview committee. At this point, our hands are tied. It's up to you, the select board, to facilitate a review of this process. Ultimately, you are, as his managers, responsible for the actions of the town manager, and we intend to hold you to that.
Thank you. Sorry, before I look down at my agenda, anyone else? No? Okay, so now we will move to appointing the Board of Health regarding the rental inspections program. It's a discussion. We have the Chair of the Board of Health, Mr. Dr. Schubert is here. Is the rest of your board here?
Yes, we are in recess and they should be on.
On Zoom, on Zoom?
At this point. So we did not.
Yes.
Elizabeth Patrick, Mar- Marcia Lewis. And probably Pam Fahy may be on there as well.
I did by accident. If you just want to press the button, right on the bottom.
Yes, Paul Schubert, of the Board of Public Health. Our meeting has been terminated, but they should all be available, I assume. Elizabeth Patrick, Marcia Lewis and Anthony from Adriania. So I appreciate the invitation as a Board of Health, options for sheer inspections for rental properties in town. It's been discussed with the, the town manager and wanted to pers- well, talk to you about it and discuss it. It seems to be apropos, as we just heard from public comments, in the Preserve has changed hands a few times and the, we want to be certain the quality of the public housing that is there, which is affordable housing, is up to date and legal. Some of the concerns we had from the Board of Health was that if there's not equality in the affordable housing, federal fair housing laws may be breached, that would put the town at a grave risk at the federal level. So some of the considerations have been a yearly inspection of rental properties in the town. So Chris, did you want to discuss a little bit about that or? I mean, that, that's the, the background from the point of view. Our big concern is that if you have affordable housing and it is not equitable, let's say they have placed the affordable housing near, let's say the, the garbage cans or the full quality is different from one to the next. What we're looking at is doing a pass-through inspection from the Board of Health to look for running water, habitability, safety from, from the health point of view. This would be a walkthrough inspection on the Board of Health, looking for health code violations. And be certain that is through the pass-through, you would be visually inspecting the quality of the apartment that are, or the rental properties, to be certain they're up to date and equitable across the, the board from the federal point of view for federal fair housing.
So do you want to go through the regulations or, Miss Pam?
So. I stayed a decent distance here. So it's actually a slightly different version. I don't think I'm too worried to kick around this. I should say, actually.
Tracy left this for all of us.
Okay, then that one sits on top of it.
September X.
That's it, right. So you have it from.
Yeah, and let me just say, this will go through town council as well. So it, it's going to be vetted appropriately for legal requirements that are necessary and available to the, the town from a legal view as well.
So based on conversations, we began a conversation with residents of the Preserve. We actually looked into, thank you for that. So we had actually looked into the town's regulatory authority to get safety and health of residents. And that rests with the Board of Council. And Pam went out and looked at a couple of other ordinances from, they, they bring committees, I think particularly Pam. It was Waymouth and Hull, which was a very longstanding programs. And again, for a long time, it wasn't much of an issue. You now have more rent limits than you ever have and it continues to grow. And making sure they're safe is critical. For houses, those inspections and for rental properties, it doesn't have that same level of oversight. And, and then, you know, tenant stock owner, they can't do things. Speeder, they're not able or should have to. So a, a first draft went out and a conversation was taken, took place with the Board of Health last month. It was a great conversation. And based on the conversation, comments from members and from the Board. The, the goal was to make this not just an annual, not just a, when a turnover, but an annual. So to create an annual program. In addition, having an inspection every time this tenant turns, make sure that it's still in compliance or in compliance. So that, that's what the new, the new draft includes. This has been bounced around off council on the current, no again. And so basically it sets up a program where there's add both an annual program that will be established. And, and also, we're having to change the tenancy, there's also an inspection. And basically, the, the, the inspection will be based on the state's sector, which is not in the regulations, but it's cited there. So we didn't, we didn't put the back of the regulations, that they're, they're in there. They're quite elaborate and they're about health and safety. The, the program would have a fee. I think one of the conversations that's kind of much, you'd be kicking around number about a hundred dollars per inspection. Again, the goal is just to pay for the program, something like money or anything like that. And that's comparable to what a food inspection might be actually. There's a lot of type of shit. It could be a one bedroom or a three bedroom. The, the basic health and safety that was called on, where it was possible, so things like that. The, and then there'd be a penalty clause, too, that would be a non-criminal disposition. Or it would be basically administrative penalty, which we can, we're allowed to do, but it's also much easier to collect. And hopefully we want to use right this. And the way it's, term garbage trash will be a hundred dollars per day and every day is a violation. So if somebody gets a notice, they don't clean it up, they, they go for weeks, a penalty could be fairly substantial. A hundred dollars doesn't sound like much, but if you want it rapidly, which it could, if you don't take, and owners take action, I think it's a fairly significant deterrent. Something like that was used in a, in a, in a, in the past. So what you have in front of you is the updated version. Council has looked at it. And again, I'm sure we'll look at it again. And based on the comments from tonight, I'm sure the Board of Health will think about it again. And then what will have, what will happen is a, a notice has to be put into the paper with a summary, not the actual draft, but summary of what it's now, with a, with a, a notice of the date. It's not a public carry per se, but it follows the format a little bit. And then there'll be, with a link to say where you can see the whole organs, the whole regulations, I should say. And the, the Board would then have, have a public meeting, then adopt it, then a program after the place. So how many cities are already taking place about that? A public, the health nurse actually ran a program in Hull, so she's actually up to speed on this. And it could probably take a little time, you know, I don't mean months, but you know, this, it, it would take this fall to get that fully up and running. The goal would be to have it running before the end of the year and start an annual inspection program. So that it kicks off and we go to a sign. So does anyone have any questions, specifically?
Yeah, so I just wanted to also mention that this is designed to protect both the owner of the property as well as the, the tenants. So if the tenants are, they've destroyed the property, a pass-through inspection as they leave, will give more credence to the owner, saying that their, you know, their security deposit is liable for the, the problems that are there. Likewise, if the tenant leaves and it looks to be pristine and their security deposit is seized, as anyone who's been through college dorms, there tends to be a, a relative mix and match of whether or not you get your security deposit back. It'd be one further tool that would protect both the owners as well as the, the tenants.
Start, Mr. Flex. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so my first question is, I understand the concept of when there's a change in tenant and there's also an annual inspection component. Can there be inspections at the request of either the tenant or property manager off of that cycle?
That could be, yeah. If there's a, something sent to the Board of Health, that is a, a request due to a violation and we would have to inspect it, yes. I mean, that goes beyond, a, a simple request for an inspection can be asked of the, the Board of Health. Regardless of the, these, of these potential regulations.
My second question is, and I'm trying to be helpful here, I'm not trying to shoot holes in this, because this is a dramatic improvement. And it does a great job of addressing some of the concerns we've heard. Thinking back to the way things are when people are moving, there can often be a very narrow window of time, or even no window of time, between tenants. So how would this work in a situation where there are either a lot of tenants moving on the same day or there's an overlap between a tenant moving out and a tenant moving in?
A couple of options. We could hire ad hoc or per diem that would come in. Clearly like Boston, for example, this past weekend, it was, you know, hundreds and hundreds of, of, you know, apartments change, change over. That would probably be the case where there would be flexibility and those would be available and we'd have to probably prompt them to be as needed. But that may be, that is certainly one of the concerns, getting enough staff and people that are qualified to inspect it in situations where there's a large turnover. It's unusual in Cohasset with the sheer number that we have. But there may be a, a weekend where there's, you know, 20, for example, that turnover.
I think the bigger question in Cohasset is just those situations where family moving in, family moving out at the same time, finding a point there where God forbid you find an issue, you have the opportunity to react without affecting either of the tenants. So again, trying to be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. That, that was one of the discussions we had, was the, the timing of, you know, if, if you get to move in a day early and your lease begins Saturday, but you get to move in Friday, what do you do about that for an inspection? That's, that's something we'd have to consider. Yeah.
And my last question is, penalties for violation, a hundred dollars per day. I assume that could also be applied retroactively if someone skipped the inspection by not informing the Board of Health that tenant was changing. So that could be applied retroactively?
I'm not sure that's legal. I'd have to talk to the town council.
So.
I mean, a retroactive fee is, I'm not certain that's in the, in the power of the Board of Health. I don't know. I'd have to talk to the town council.
Who's trying to manage the potential incentive for someone to tell the Board of Health? And then the clock doesn't start until the Board of Health finds out, that would be an adverse result.
I mean, we, we could certainly put that into the regulation. That's one of the, you know, tweaks we could potentially add.
I would encourage that, just to manage the incentives. And that's all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
Doctor, thank you very much. And we discussed, Chris, about potential hiring, maybe another inspector, so someone we could discuss this, Doctor. What kind of basis? I'm not sure if it's a tri-town, we discussed, which is dedicated strictly to the public.
It were part of a regional, uh, public health excellence grant, so the conversation is potentially hiring somebody that would cover all the tenants. So all the committees are going to end up needing this to accomplish. There's more rentals than situated ever before. And you have also a substantial number of rentals, as new as they may have been when they first went in. They're not going to be like that forever. So it's important that, and that's also an issue for the state to make sure housing is safe. So I, I, as I understand it, that fits well within our brand, I think.
That's right. Yeah. And, and Hull has, has been doing this for a bit of time. They have more turnover for rental properties than Cohasset does. And I think we would probably do a regional situation of, of handling that with a, a, a regional inspector.
I would also echo my colleague in stressing that if we can do some retroactive, release a threat thereof, because we want to encourage them to let us know that people are leaving. And also, we want to discourage any segregation, as you mentioned, Doctor. And any movement of people just for adverse reasons, cuts, to set yourself closer to the dumpster area, or just, you know, someone wants to be tempted to be closer to the pool. So we do want to encourage that, that they will report immediately if there will be someone for any reason, therefore, and then we get our inspector up there. But also, just to encourage the observer, any other folks that, that have issues. It's also inherent on them to be reporting in any issues that do arise. I would suggest first that they do, work to their management company. Get a log here at the time, then report to the town. And it's on us to get inspections done. But I do encourage, again, echo my colleague, so we, you know, encourage management company to see if we can actate that, if we find out that someone's already missed that one. Okay, we get a chance to inspect it when they move. First, is that legal? Do we know? If, for instance, someone moves, they don't report it. Oh, no, we've got tenants in there already, having its plans. Well, we didn't get a chance to inspect that, so that's.
That would be, that would be a violation. And the ordinance says you have to let us know, and answer the tenancy. And as, as Doctor Schubert pointed out, when I lost them, it was, was college students, like feeling, first.
Agreed.
And that would be a violation. Now, what you also raised, what if somebody has a government ever? What, what can you do there? That, maybe there'd be a separate penalty, something like that. We should just, we'll, we'll go back and check.
I just think that we can maybe as much as we can at any point in time, you know, for violation, this is no good violation. And secondly, it's complex. It's that if some, well, they moved in September 30th. Well, here we are in November. We never got a chance to inspect, when did you fix it? So you're a violation in our account. And then I'll also discourage retaliation or against segregation.
I, I know that we have a vision and, and salary, kind of if, if you don't get a permit, you're supposed to, the fees double. The bill that the inspector is supposed to impose on the tenants, so perhaps if somebody rents without a permit, maybe it could be a, and, and multiplier of some kind. And lots of challenges.
Thank you.
Mr. Grayton?
Uh, yeah, nice to see you, Paul. Couple of questions that, that I would have. First of all, this would apply to every single rental unit in Cohasset, including single-family rentals and auxiliary dwelling units, ADUs?
That, that's correct.
So, so every, so it's a hundred, basically it's a hundred dollars per unit. And everybody has to pay that. And as long as it's done to everybody. I think it's a responsibility of the landlord to keep it properly, yeah, properly. And quite honestly, most landlords do. There are abuses and that's why we have an inspection program. If in the midst between inspections, a tenant calls and has a complaint and the inspection comes in, does that automatically mean the landlord has to pay a hundred dollars for that inspection? Okay, so this would be a normal health inspection between, or.
Typically would be, yeah.
Okay, just like what you would normally do if somebody called.
So if there's, if there's a health code violation and there's a suspicion of it, yes, it would require. Now,
But you wouldn't charge.
Without, without abuse. So if they keep calling over and over and over again and there are no violations, then you, you can't be doing that.
No, I know.
But yes, the, the, the inspection would go to the landlord.
Yeah, but the inspection fee is paid on an annual basis. And just because you get a call to go over and look at apartment 3A midway through, it's not a, not a, not a hundred dollar charge to the landlord.
As it is, it would be, yes. As, as it stands, it would be, yeah.
No, 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 if I, if I make clarity, I don't want to discredit, Mr. Jim. If you're doing, if we're doing a. If you're doing, if we're doing a a separate health and safety inspection, there's no additional fee.
That's right.
Unless they didn't have a permit to begin.
Well, of course, that's.
So but it it's so, no, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an inspection fee if there's a code violation call, somebody calls and says, I have a permit, but something's broken.
Yeah.
Is that clarifying?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, because the reality is sometimes a tenant is going to figure out. They can repeatedly do that and they abuse the inspector's time, which is important, so. You know, I think as long as it's very clear in the public, and I think the town has an obligation to inform all of the property owners and renters. That this this is coming and the auxiliary dwelling units, which you may or may not have followed that. There's a lot of movement to allow. Properties that have secondary in-law apartments to. And they would also be covered by this.
That's correct, yeah, that was one of the, that was one of the prompts for this as well, because with the state regulations now coming across. Allowing accessory dwelling unit to be available to, at this point, it looks like every property owner could potentially have one.
Right.
That prompted saying, well, you may have a rental unit in every single family home in any given town, and that prompted the discussion.
Part of what, you know, represent public meeting is to inform the public, so people who are watching at home will have clarity. Thank you very much for all your good work.
Mr. Frank.
Great, thank you, my first want to thank everybody on the town government side for working on this. Town Manager's Office, Board of Health, Board of Health Agent for helping come up with some of these regulations. I think it's very important to, one of the couple of things is that this will be for all apartments in Cohasset. And it's very important on that because we have a lot of apartments in Cohasset that could be, you know, above garages, they could be second floor, they could be in the basement even. I would say that in the in the regulations or at least the table contents, maybe one thing could be added is that. All this information get aggregated and also not only kept the board health, but also sets the fire department. I don't know what system they use regarding the properties, but I think it's important for the fire department to know. If there is an extra apartment above a garage or something, if there's a fire on the property, that they would, they would know that, that there is a dwelling unit there. That it's not just the people in the house. So that's just one one change I had, but I do think it does need to be for not only when somebody moves, but also. Year round, as a part of it, I think some of the questions that were asked is that the people. Is that the the landlord sees an occupancy permit for the apartment once it gets checked? So once they have that, then they have the occupancy permit for that, and and without it, they cannot rent the unit. So I would ask, and I know it was talked about a little bit, but I have two questions, the first one is is. In execution of it, I know Town Manager talked about maybe doing the grant or hiring some extra staff. But to the Board of Health, if that, you know, is going to fit and be able to do the job for them, us to be able to have extra staff in order to do this. And then the second question is, is if, again, if you could just keep this aggregated. So they would not only be there for the Board of Health to review, but also for the fire department as well. And I also, if we can also get, even though we had the questions from the board, maybe if there's any questions or comments from our Board of Health agent or the other members from Board Health as well, thank you.
So the 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 first question with the, what would require as far as the implementation and execution? It would involve staff, but probably also software of some type, that would be iPads, software for inspection codes. That you could kind of screen, that would be reported to basically whether or not it was habitable. From the aggregated idea, getting information to the fire department, I think that's a very good idea because you may have. You know, apartments are two-family homes and a two-family home may be an apartment above, so maybe three separate. Individuals living in three separate locations on on one building, so I think that's important. If there is a fire or there's evacuation needed, that the fire department has that availability. Most, you know, most towns would have that, when you have the large building, you know how many units are available that are occupied, and that that's a very good idea.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I think it would depend how much it would cost from the software point of view. It was a excessive amount, we'd probably go to town meeting with a a warrant article, if not, it may be able to be covered under the, some of the grants we have.
Mr. Brady.
Questions for Chris, but if we can discuss the meeting of the software, we elaborated and I apologize for getting ahead of my notes. Some software that we're interested in, it was supposed to be said about as well.
Yes, so Pam's already started to look into it, actually, we actually, we have a platform. Which is actually shared by the fire department too, they have access to it, so and then includes the whole planning suite. Including health permits, so we would add this module, it should be a rental inspection module to it. And we'd also have to pay for the talent's field inspections, that's what we're doing now. Field of the tablet, take pictures, fill out reports online, so yes, that would be something we'd. We'd either, we try to actually accelerate if we need to, and the work for funding at the special time meeting in December.
Thank you, Brady. I apologize for the delay.
Mr. Flex.
I apologize, just one more follow-up, hearing your discussion of Mr. Frank, this discussion here, I just want to make sure. Have we thought through the initial process, just getting a catalog of rental units that exist in the tenant, could you speak to that briefly? I defer to our health director.
Oh, okay. I'm Pam Fagie, I'm the health director. There is definitely going to be some logistics that we're going to have to spend some time setting up before we get going with this for sure. And like we've mentioned, one of the things is our software program, so we have this system called Permit Eyes. For anybody that's signed up for a building permit or a board of health permit, that platform exists. We're going to need a new module that we don't currently have for housing, and so one of the first tasks we're going to have to do is is build up. A database and kind of seek and find all these different landlords across the town and have them fill out a permit to this Permit Eyes system. And you're right, the ultimate endpoint will be that we will be issuing somebody a occupancy permit once we. We've done an inspection there, so the the structure exists out there, we're just going to have to pay for that portion of it. And then also the inspectional software is a separate piece, we'll have to do that as well. But definitely there is going to be some administrative time to find all these people, to let them know that they have to sign up and fill out an application on this Permit Eyes. So number one is get it, and then number two is is find them all, so it's going to take a little time for sure.
And that was the question is. You guys have got to work here, I absolutely appreciate it, just thinking through that communication plans, people who have an in-law apartment and are renting, don't think of themselves as landlords. Get that communication and understand that they do have to register.
That's right, that's going to be a, you know, a definite communication informational hurdle we're going to have to accomplish and, you know, consider that because. In places where it's already in place, like in Holland and Weymouth, there's already a list of, you know, the. Properties that have rental units, that have in-law apartments, that have, you know, accessory buildings. This doesn't exist, honestly, we don't know how many are rented in town, we have an idea of the major complexes like the preserves, but there's a lot of other. Locations in town that are probably rented, we don't even know about.
We could do in the interim, start, and I think this may agree with me, again. Start with the simple ones, the anchor, one four three, the town manager's update, and we know, we let them know that. It's kind of a sheriff in town, so that we need to know, and that those who don't report in risk potential violation. Again, as we started with someone living in a basement, for instance, the fire department doesn't know if they're gone, they have a family for their house. So I think that we'd start and then again, we get, you just start the word on small, get it out, again, anchor, eight one four three, it's associated major town manager updates. Small town, I think, or we'll spread.
When it is, if I could follow up on Paul's comment, when it is ready for prime time to roll out. I think that if we also beyond going into social media, but also going to the realtors who also rent apartments in town. The the whole process is very similar in into getting the fire certificate when they sell the property. Where they have to go to the fire department and get the, you know, the smoke detectors checked, everyone has to have that at a closing, and they're pretty used to that. Happening, it's this will be the same type of thing, but just getting an occupancy permit for a rental. So that would be another avenue to get up to a different group of people. The one thing I did want to ask this between Town Manager and Pam, is I wasn't aware of what training is going to be needed for either the. Or or health agent and or any inspector that comes in for for this this kind of stuff, do they have it at the MMA level or special classes? Is anybody aware of that?
Yeah, I can I can answer that. So there is training that you receive, so I'm a registered sanitarian, we do have continuing education, so constantly going to classes. But there is a formal training course for housing and Joni Tavanna, our new public health nurse, has gone through that, so she's certified. And like people keep mentioning, she's been running the whole program for years, so. I think that we we get this other inspector, it probably will be through our grant, and we probably will have them go and take all these classes, there's different tiers of training, there's online training. Then there's like classroom training, and then the third tier is actually you go out and do inspections with a trainer, so. As I know tier two alone is eighteen hours of training, but I think like, you know, we've got Joni who's up and ready to go right now, I could do it as well, and. We're just going to have to find somebody and and train them ourselves and have them go through the state's training.
I just have a few clarifying questions or or comments, so we were talking about rental units and ADUs and, you know, the basement apartment. This regulation pertains to those situations where there there's a tender between a tenant and a landlord. Not like my basement apartment that my son lives in, not that he does, this is just an example.
If if there's a lease involved, a legal lease, that would be, yeah, under the the purview.
So it has to be a legal lease and a legal.
That's right, so if.
But someone living in an in-law apartment, if, you know.
Not necessarily, no.
And it's also for a period beyond thirty days, is that correct? So so someone has to have an agreement, someone could be in a in a B and B or an Airbnb or whatever you call them these days.
That's correct, yeah.
Those don't apply.
We're starting with the rental units, the the B and Bs I think are probably up next as a consideration down the road.
Thank you, and then I I just want to reiterate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that up. Until this program gets up and running, any tenant in any rental in the town of Cohasset. Who thinks that there's a violation of the state sanitary code guidelines should email the Board of Health, that's you, Dr. Schubert and Pam Fagie, and have an inspection.
That's certainly reasonable, yeah.
Okay, so so that people don't, if they have an issue now, they don't have to wait for us to get this program up and running, is that is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Mr. Brady.
I will say, just to say, and I think it's a fantastic set of rules. But I also think to a degree it could be a two-way street, we don't want the system abused. Well, every person that has, you know, again, I'm not minimizing any, don't get me wrong, any stretch. Someone has a flyer, they went off and they're calling for health inspection, it's a whole screen. So we have to maybe factor in. That she's not losing it, because it's over for, you know, kind of a useless claim, that gets an inspector up there. It's not just the landlord, but illegitimate claims, which we want to answer, but it's also, you know, these are paid employees, it's just that the claims have merit, that's all.
Right, they have they have to follow the state sanitary guideline, so so that would be embedded in the in the communication prior to.
That's right, nuisance claims, that's going to be, that's going to be a problem, yeah.
And I have one more question, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with the state sanitary code guidelines, how do you inspect for or or note of. Issues with handicap accessibility?
Well, I mean, some of those are federal requirements, so it has to be given width, there has to be an accessible bathroom, accessible. Living quarters and typically it's it's a distance of a wide wheelchair and availability reach from. From the wheelchair height to shelving and things like that, there's there's federal regulations for that.
But that would not be under deferred view of the Board of Health, or would it?
It it goes under, I guess, habitability, you know, is it, you know, compatible for living? But it would it would prompt a potential problem if there is not accessibility, yeah.
Building inspector, it's building code, and so a lot of these, the building inspector probably will go out with us sometimes because. It can be a combination of building and health, like for example, a lot of people call up about mold. Well, mold is usually because there's a structural leak somewhere in the building, and so, you know, I'll go out as the health inspector because there's mold, but I'll. Bring the building inspector with me so that he can like look at the structure and see like, well, what's causing this possible leak? So accessibility and handicap accessibility, that's more the building inspector, but it will be in tandem a lot of times, I think.
No, go ahead.
That brings up, if somebody moves into a a unit, are all units now in Cohasset required to be handicapped accessible without exception? I don't know.
I I don't know that answer.
So what happens if some, if you have an apartment and it's rented and somebody moves in and and they suddenly they need wheelchairs? The landlord going to be required to retrofit the apartment, and I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that.
If the board doesn't have any further questions, I'd like to thank Pam Fagie, Dr. Schubert, you and your board, Mr. Senior.
Just to say, does Board Health have anything to say?
I was going to get there.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, Mr. Brady for participating in all of this, it's very important to our residents and we appreciate your efforts and. If any of your colleagues would like to close out the discussion, would be happy to hear what they have to say. I think you're muted.
No further comment from me, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
So I'd ask, beg the favor of the chair for a moment so we can adjourn the meeting and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Public Health. September four. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting of September fourth.
Is there a second?
My second.
And all votes, Marcia?
Marcia Louisai.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Kirkpatrick.
Paul Schubert, motion passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is a continuing conversation of the town manager review process and schedule.
License.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the license and permits, thank you, David, we're actually going to postpone that, that's why I didn't go to it, we're postponing it, the applicant is not available this evening. So we'll postpone it to the next meeting, now we'll move to the town manager review process and schedule, this is a part two of a conversation we began at the last meeting. We all seem to agree on the process and the schedule, we had comments on the evaluation tool. And I took the comments and I kind of made a hybrid example of of both of them. And we're here to have a final conversation about that and. Then we can move forward. Does anyone have any comments?
The only comment I I might have is I thought we had a. Something that's important, which is there should be some mechanism where the community at a large has an opportunity to. Submit their comments, that's being, it has to be acted upon, but I don't think it's at all unreasonable. But I don't think it's at all unreasonable for citizens of the town to be able to officially note their, um, their opinions, pro and con of the town manager. And I think that should be in some manner.
Um, okay. Well, citizens are always able to email all of us and, and many do. And, um, when we're emailed as a group, we can't respond back other than to acknowledge we received the email because it could be construed as a deliberation. Um, but people are free, free to weigh in. People have weighed in and with their comments and concerns. And, um, as it presently says, the evaluation is the responsibility of the board of selectmen. Now, if we incorporate input we receive as individual select board members, that's within our purview to do so, but it's, it's each of our own individual evaluation, uh, to be compiled into a singular document. Um, all individual evaluations and the final compilation will be in the town manager's file.
So what I, what you're saying is that in your way, this, the way it's structured, there should be no way, no way for the, to note various comments. I'm not saying we need to rule upon the validity of the comments, pro and con. Um, and I would say that freezing the public out of the opportunity to, to officially go on record as to their opinion of the arguably the most, uh, powerful office in the town is, is, um, problematic to say.
Well, I didn't say that they would be frozen out. That's your words. Um, what I said is that individual citizens can email their comments, thoughts and concerns or compliments to us as a group or to us individually. And how you incorporate those into your own evaluation is up to you. And if you wanted to say in the comment section, Mrs. So-and-so said this, then that's within your right to do so in your own evaluation. But in terms of handing out the, uh, form to eighty-four hundred residents, I, that, we'll have a vote. I mean, we can vote. Well, it's, it's not my decision. Let's, let's have a vote.
You know, and, and I'm not saying form goes out, but I'm saying that we should have some mechanism in which, um, citizens, taxpayers can formally put their opinion in. Doesn't mean they are a part of the, uh, select board evaluation process. But a lot of people feel that they're being ignored. And I think part of that should be an opportunity to have in there where individual residents of the town may say, this is my opinion and, and, and.
Okay. So how do you envision that? How, what does that look like, Jack? Cause I told you what I thought it looked like. So how, how does that look like to you?
How, how does it look like to me?
Yeah.
Um, it looks to me that the citizens shall have the right to submit their personal comments and evaluation to the, to the evaluation process. Does that make sense? I'm trying to keep it very simple. I just don't want people to be frozen out. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Flex, you had a comment.
So, uh, uh, I think the mechanism that's in place is that we are effectively hired by the town to oversee the town manager and make sure the town manager is doing his job. And I know you get phone calls and emails from folks in the town, as do I, and as do all of us. It is our job to make sure that that feedback is appropriately reflected in the town manager's review. So, uh, I do not think in any way this is freezing out the residents of the town. It's up to us as select board members to engage with the town and get that feedback and make sure it's reflected in the review. I don't think that's freezing them out at all, Jack.
Well, I think in a formal review process to tell, to tell those people who are most impacted that their individual comments, I'm not saying that action should be taken, but they should have the ability to incorporate and in the final report, incorporate some of the, um, comments from citizens. It's not a major thing. It doesn't, uh, impact the select board's responsibility. It just gives people an opportunity to, um, formally, uh, put their opinion. And you know, it's not just opposed. It's in favor. If town manager is doing a very, very good job and people feel that way, they should have the ability to, um, on the official record, say, town manager's doing a good job.
Mr. Grady?
Well, before I respond, I'd ask my colleague, only so that's the floor. How exactly would you do that? We have mechanisms in place. We have emails. We meet people. People call, uh, you, me, Mr. Flex, it's not parrot, uh, at any point in time, we receive dozens of you. And so, Jack, I'd ask you, um, if it's something that's workable, I'd like to hear it. So.
I just.
But how exactly do you think it should work?
I just, I just laid it out that.
No, you didn't. What you did.
Excuse me, may I answer?
No, not yet. Cause I'm not done.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It was a very broad statement that you made. And I'd like to know exactly how you feel the review process should be done by the time. That's what I want to know. So if we're, we're deciding the future of the person, uh, how is that?
All right. Are you?
Yeah.
I answer it now?
You can answer it now, Jack.
I answered it earlier.
No, you didn't.
So.
I think you need to, excuse me. I said citizens should, citizens should be allowed to submit their comments of the performance of the town manager um, to be included in the evaluation report. Said that about two or three minutes ago, essentially those, uh, similar words. Uh, you're, you're, I don't know how clear I can say. I'm keeping it very, very simple. Citizens have the right to submit their opinions to the town manager's evaluation.
And I said the citizens, of course they have a right. That's why we have emails. That's why we have meetings. That's why we have telephones. If any citizen here can pick up the phone so they can submit and then act factors in, but the select board was hired, right? As a body to make those decisions. Now, the select board should and is influenced by the town. That's what we hope is working together with the people.
Thought I would, see you before. I thought I was clear to be incorporated in the town manager's evaluation.
You said that at the beginning.
Yes, I did. That's what I'm trying to say.
I guess, I get, I guess, Jack, what we're struggling with is how? We know what the what is, but how is that to happen? How do you see that happen?
Citizens can submit their opinions to the town and those to be incorporated in the town manager evaluation report. Very simple.
They are incorporated. Everybody who does an opinion sends it in. That's kind of influence. How a board member and it should influence how a board member is going to run through the review process. You have a majority of people that are unhappy with something. You try to alleviate that situation. You try to see how you can fix it and you take the appropriate steps to correct it. And that means factoring those things into your review.
If a citizen says, I have a problem with, or let's say if a citizen says, our town manager did a wonderful job on this and I wish to officially note that on his evaluation, he did a good job. That citizen should have the right to submit, write that down and submit it in the evaluation report.
So.
Pro or con. That's all.
Agreed. And, and thank you for saying pro or con because, because it is, that is important. But I think that the challenge is, Jack, is the, the final report is a compilation. And so the, the person doing that, um, which, um, we, we can talk about, takes the commonalities of all five of our evaluations and puts it in. And so for example, if we received, each of us received twenty-five or thirty emails from residents saying the town manager does a fabulous job with the budgeting or the town manager, um, is not, um, doesn't write very well. We probably all would incorporate those comments into our individual evaluations. And because we all did, they all, would all go into the, the compilation, the, the final review that gets expressed in public because we've all received that feedback. One, none of our individual comments that don't have commonality with the other four members of the board, don't necessarily go into the final evaluation because then the evaluation would be seven inches high with all of the individual comments. It, it's really the collective assessment of all of the categories, positive and negative of the five of us. And the five of us get there by listening to, to the people. Does that make sense?
Um, the only thing that we, we might wish to do is included as a separate appendix. So we're not, you know, essentially trying to summarize a bunch of comments just as a separate appendix. So it is on the record what these individual citizens had to say. It's a very simple concept. It doesn't have to evaluate, uh, can, uh, change the evaluation that, that we as a select board may come. It just says that when citizens want to have something go on record in the official record, that that should be allowed and perfectly fine to have it as separate appendix. I don't understand why that's so controversial, quite honestly. But I do think that, you know, that we, we have some opinions on this and I don't know if there's any further comments on rehashing. It's a pretty clear thing. And maybe we should bring it to a vote, A or N.
Mr. Grady?
I think more importantly that it's inherent on every select board member to take the input from the town citizens, but it's also inherent on those select board members to write the review and present it and have that review in written form and put down on paper for discussion in between whoever is evaluating those reviews. But they have to be written first. And as a time with best select board members writing a review, they incorporate the citizens' views and, um, everything on them is on it, be it good, be it bad, be it appropriate, um, but first the reviews have got to be written.
Well, may I?
That's pretty simple, I think. It's just writing a review, um, and incorporating, incorporating those ideas.
May I reiterate again? This is a simple thing where citizens' comments about the town manager will be incorporated in a appendix to the report on the town manager. And I'd like to put that in terms of a motion. I think everybody needs to vote on it and publicly have a position.
That'd be heard on this first before we.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't gonna make an issue yet.
Okay. Um, the, the updated evaluation, uh, I, I thought was excellent. It's both uh, in objective standard with the subjective standard. I thought the previous one that the select board had was a little bit, there was a little bit too much narrative and, and therefore was a little bit more subjective than objective. So I think this mixes both well together. It's very well written and it's very comprehensive because it's a lot larger than the previous one. Uh, so I, I do think that it will be a, a, a fair and equitable representation of, of what a performance evaluation should be, uh, for a town. And of course, the three hundred fifty-six towns and cities, there, there's certainly a lot of different flavors and different things you could do. I think this kind of marries the best of both worlds. Uh, in regard to, uh, uh, having the, the public involved in some way, shape or form, I, I think it might be helpful to just, if there are comments from the public to just, uh, aggregate them in some way, because if people come to one of the board members and not the other, then the other four don't hear about it because they've gone to one, they're not gonna go to five. So if there's a way to maybe just aggregate comments or, or other things from the public, the pro, con, in between, uh, so that all the board members could see them before the evaluation, that would be fine. And then of course during the evaluation process, this is in a public meeting as well. Uh, so people are, you know, can bring their comments there as well. Of course, we will have done the evaluation at that time. Uh, but I do think beforehand, if there's a way to just aggregate, if there's things from the public, then all the board members could see it. Cause I, I don't know if people call all five board members where they're gonna call one or the other, or maybe somebody that they know or is their neighbors, who knows what else. So that would be my only comment, that if there was a way to do that, take it in beforehand, that would be great. Um, and then of course there's the meeting, uh, during the evaluation in November, what we actually do. So those, those be two opportunities, uh, for the public to be involved. And I don't think, you know, would, would be hard for the select to do. Thank you.
Any?
Would?
Go ahead.
Would that, would that work if we had it so there shall be, uh, a mechanism to collect um, or, or, or for a place for people to send their um, comments on the town manager review in, and have them put in an appendix um, and submit to the select board for their select board's review. So we do have everything coming together. So people, when they say something, they know that it's put in a part of the, um, appendix and appendix part of the record and then the select board can look at those. So everybody sees them all. And then we don't have to incorporate it formally in the evaluation process. But people feel that their, their voices have been, you know, heard and, and aggregated. I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that. That fellow board member.
Okay. Let me just mull that over in my head for twenty seconds. I just want everyone to be clear. Um, in the town manager contract, article two, section two point six, the board shall annually review and evaluate the town manager, subject to a process set forth, forth by the board. Said review and evaluation shall be based on the goals and objectives, objectives developed jointly by the board and the town manager. Uh, further, the board shall provide the town manager with a summary written statement of the evaluation findings of the board and shall provide an adequate opportunity for the town manager to discuss his evaluation with the board. The individual evaluations of board members and the summary evaluation should be private town managers' personnel files, subject to section twenty-two E of chapter thirty A of the general laws. Um, I just wanted to be clear so that we understand contractually that the evaluation is to be done by the select board. Um, that doesn't negate getting feedback. Um,
I agree. This is not in conflict with the contract at all. This is a supplement. So, uh, the citizens have a forum that they can go. It also allows the select board to have, you know, sometimes one board member will get an email and somebody else won't. And we are constrained, but the public should know, we are constrained. If you send me an email, I can't really send it.
You can.
Um, actually.
Actually, actually, can you, under open meeting law, okay, the general guidelines are you can, the board can on email, you can have discussion about scheduling, time, location and place, or you can forward information, uh, not for comment. So if, if I receive something from a resident that I thought all of you should know, I would forward and say not for public comment, do not comment. And it's for informational purposes only. So we are, we are able to do that. We can't comment. We can't write back. I can't write back to that person and say, thank you so much. I agree with you. I don't agree with you. Jack forwarded me your email. That is not allowed. But sending something just for information is allowed.
Well, I also understand that every select board member can print emails and submit them as public record. So there's your aggregate right there. And so it's inherent on us. If I get a email from show lady, and then I could submit that to public record.
I think it is so much.
So that's, there's your aggregate right there.
I think it's so much um, more efficient and easier and more consistent with full transparency for people to have the ability to submit to their governing body their opinion upon the most important and powerful, very powerful position in town government. And I don't see why it's controversial to take all those comments that have been made by citizens um, and, and put them together in a, in, in, in a unified record. I, I, I don't see why that's controversial.
Mr. Flex?
If, if the issue is, Jack, that you're getting feedback from folks in town that their voice isn't being heard, then I think that's a problem for the select or not the town manager. A problem for the select or not the town manager. So. If people have opinions, we wanna hear them, we hear them every meeting, loud and clear. And I I think we are well within our rights to include those in our review. Of the town manager, but this feels like. A redundant mechanism that uh would prevent us from doing of overseeing the town manager and providing his reviews. I I wouldn't wanna be in the position of saying, well, of course, you should have addressed that, it was in the appendix. My job is to review the town manager along with the rest of us. We should do that and not somehow delegate that to public comment in an appendix.
I don't think that's delegating it at all, it's a very simple, you know. Putting together the comments that citizens make about their own government. I I, it's so simple and it's so basic to democratic process. But I do think that, you know, um, people have their o- 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 opinion and and I think uh. The board should publicly. Vote on how they wanna go on this issue, that's our responsibility.
So I'm happy, I'm happy to put forth a motion on that respect, what I was going to say is, I wa- I would want to vet this through legal counsel. Um, and and just to make sure we're not in violation of. Of the contract, although I read it, I'm not an attorney, um, and that it's um.
It already exists.
It it and it does, it does already exist.
No violating anything, it is on the email that we can. Without responding, submitted, and it goes into public record. It goes in to public record where anybody can see it, and in that case in time. That influences any board member, their opinions, one way or the other, good, bad, indifferent. But everybody should take your account, so you can see that, you can submit that email, and that email becomes public record.
It's just aggregates it so it's all together.
Okay, well.
And you've already, I'm sorry.
So, all right, so. Um, I'll ask for a motion to approve Mr. Creighton's request that public comments are aggregated into a single. File. For select board review. Is that?
That's fine.
Okay, not attached to the review, but for our review, okay, for our review, is there a motion?
So I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna, um. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. That that being.
Could I ask that the uh individual members be called?
For what reason?
I want, uh. So they clearly. What reasons, just to clarify for the record as to who voted, we we're not saying. Three to two unless you're gonna memorialize who the three to two votes.
All rating no.
Chris Black's no, I don't believe in redundant government.
Ellen R. No.
Jack Gray, no.
Dave Frog, aye.
So, so that. Motion in this conversation in no way, and I think all five of us would agree. Would dissuade, is meant to dissuade anyone in the public. Any community member, any a- anyone. To email us, to call us, my phone number is always at the bottom of my signature on my email, it's my cell phone number. Um, if you call, I will call you back. Um. And send us, and send us your comments, um. We, we have our perspective and um. Having done this for six years on the school committee. Um, stakeholder input was always very important in putting together the superintendent's evaluation, but it was the board who did it. Um, and. And we had voices who wanted to be heard and and through their their efforts, you know, the collective of their comments. Were incorporated, so um I feel comfortable in that process. And I encourage everyone to share with your your friends and people of a point of view, positive or negative, to email us. Or call. Okay. So. Back to. The two, the valuation instrument itself, um. We heard from Mr. Farag. Is there any objection objection, Mr. Flex?
Uh, just one minor thing, there was a typo, and there's a guide in there for what the numbers mean.
Okay.
Two threes and one, one of the threes is supposed to be in five, it seems expectations. On rating scale, maybe six at the top.
Page six. Three, three. A two. Oh, oh, no, it's a three, two, one.
Three, two, one.
The three, two, one, so you um, you all will get this in a word format so that um these comment boxes are expandable. Um, you can print in handwriting and scan it back in. Which is, which is fine. Okay, um, I don't think we need to vote on this, everyone's in agreement?
I I guess one more comment, I just wanna think the board had worked on this, because I think it it professionalizes. And systemizes uh the review process, and it also helps uh bring the town government to the twenty-first century, so. Thanks for the work on it.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, thank you, so everyone has the um schedule from the last meeting, we're we're gonna proceed with that town council is available. For it. Okay, next up is um. Select Board Working Group to Review the Town Manager Act, a discussion and a vote. So, um, Mr. Farag brought this, he requested this on the agenda, um. To form a working group to review the Town Manager Act. So I'll let you take it away.
Uh, great, thank you, I asked for this uh particular item to be on. Uh, the agenda for tonight, uh based upon the comments from the last meeting, just to facilitate that conversation, see what the. Select board here thought about it, uh whether it's a working group or committee, um I think it should be specifically looked at, especially regarding. Um, the review of what uh appointments could be made by the town manager versus the select board, uh currently. Uh, when it comes to hiring, the select board gets the final. View on, or the final say on police chief, fire chief. And the management director, and of course, the town manager, Byron. Uh, so those are the four positions that the select board gets to choose, now the other directors. Uh, throughout town government, uh are appointed by the town manager as per the Town Manager Act, so. Uh, what I really wanna review is not just town, not the town manager act as a whole, per se, but is regarding uh the highway. And what should it be, and so this, it's from the previous meeting, uh specifically, uh we should be looking at uh the directors, and if any of those positions should be. Due by the select board to be chosen, um at at the very least, I would say that. When it comes to the senior director or the director of the senior center here, in the hall that we're sitting in, uh that that one should be elevated. Uh, my comments that I made in the last meeting, uh which I won't go over again, but they're part and attached to the record. I think that that position should be elevated, uh so that the select board get the final call on. Gets chosen to be the the senior center director, uh and for the only reason is that it puts it on uh the same parity. Uh, that is of the other. Other ones that are very important with the town, and and really, uh that position has evolved, and it needs to be relooked at. Where uh senior issues, as we talked about before, used to be in the community center, used to be in one room. Uh, that that the programs have expanded greatly to where we are today, as the seniors know who use them. Uh, and as far as our population in the town, it's a, it's a significant segment, and if you go with people forty-five and over, it's almost. Almost majority of people. Uh, are in that category of age that are either going to need those services if they don't have now, but we will all get to a certain age where we will. So, uh, on the superintendent's side, which is on the school's side, which is separate from the town's side. Uh, they, uh, the superintendent, when they hire superintendent, they go through, uh they have different, not only they have a. View committee, the selection committee, but they also have uh members of the community, and get to ask questions, get to be part of the process. Even students uh sometimes get to be a part of the process. Uh, in hiring the superintendent, why should we have the same thing uh for the senior director, uh for our other population? With the people who are not only on the on the senior side, but also uh town, townspeople and citizens as well. And it would also, uh, they're the ones who pay the tax in this town as well, so, uh for all those reasons, uh I put it on the. Or help ask for it to be put on the agenda tonight, and we look into that and specifically with the hiring of directors. Uh, and so whether it's a committee or a working group, uh that is the. That is the whole idea. Uh, behind it. So I will leave it open for comments from the select board members and anyone else. And then I'll. Follow up after.
Mr. Creighton?
Well, I think it's long overdue. We actually do have some former select. Board members who were present when this was. First uh put through in the strong manager, we have what is considered a s- a strong town manager act and a lot of authority. Is put in. The hands. Of the town manager. Government's gone substantially larger since then. We have boards that didn't exist. Now exist, have a lot of powers. Um, senior center is a classic example. And. To centralize. I I think the select board. Should have an oversight on key positions, I think we need to look at this. I would also say that the um HR is a highly professional. Position now, it's not the old personnel manager where you went down to get your check. There's a whole variety of very intricate and very legally problematic. Requirements. So we might also wanna look at what are the requirements for that, and I think the whole process needs a a review. I know Duxbury recently went through their employment, um. Procedures and qualifications. So this is something I think that is long overdue, and I think it's time that that we take a look at it. Um, and I would certainly support this.
Ready?
At the elder affairs meeting. Processes were discussed. If there was some flaws inherent in that. I left the meeting thinking they were going to. But I will say this, I don't agree with rewriting the town manager. Say why, I don't be politicizing an office. Uh, select boards change, they come, they go. Voices, different opinions. You know, a town manager is supposed to be guiding the ship. It's on the select board. To take care of that town manager, we just got off this review process, which is we're all discussing. Something like that. Indicates town opinion. And uh, this has been a very hot button item, and it's really kind of blown up over the elders, again, I don't disagree, processes may have been flawed, I was at that meeting. I left it. Thinking that. It was gonna be collaboration with the town manager. With the elder affairs committee, justifiably so, picking and choosing, working collaboratively. But the select board, I prefer to take over town manager's role in picking and choosing and hiring. Which is selected, and so if, for instance. You have a majority of the board, wants somebody in an office, they put them there. That board changes the next year, you get that person who's doing the job, runs the risk of being put out of that position. I don't agree with that. You know, our job is to listen to you. We invest trust in the town manager, it is his job, and if the town manager makes a mistake, then it's inherent on the select board. To try to set the staff, the rubber straight. But to take on every HR role and the elder affairs committee, I don't disagree, that's a very important group, it's grown. And I hope it grows. Until this building spreads right out down the street, I think it does a fantastic job. But where I find fault now, right now, with not with anybody, is that the process may have been flawed. That those have to be investigated and worked on, and Mr. Kears ran that meeting, I thought he did an outstanding job. And again, thought it was put to rest, that the town manager would be working with the elder affairs committee. Uh, to come up with the process, so. What happened does not happen again. But. Again, select boards come and go, town managers come and go. I don't think it's right, what kind of talent would we attract? In in a town manager. For basically neutering them, telling them to sit at a desk, shake hands periodically, but leave it to us, the elected body will take it from here. And that's where I stand with that. I don't wanna see a position politicized, I don't wanna see a position undermined. My colleague, Mr. Creighton, said that the town manager invested with quite a bit of power, I agree with the town manager having that power. I also agree with the town manager being called to account, every one of us has heard. What's going on. And steps have been taken to remedy those situations. They don't happen again. But to put it in the hand of a body that changes every year to a degree. I think is inherently dangerous. We're politicizing an office, politicizing a job. And I don't think at the end of the day, that's gonna work out too.
Mr. Flex?
So, uh, we all heard the feedback about the hiring of the director of elder affairs, uh and that one is clearly sensitive, I think we would all agree that there was room for improvement there. Uh, I've heard from people who have very legitimate concerns about process and input that should have been considered, that wasn't considered. But I've also heard from people who seem to be getting spun up about. Claims that. Person who was hired didn't have any senior center experience, didn't have. Uh, the appropriate qualifications, that important things were left out of the job description. Uh, I've also talked to people who were getting links to articles from AI-generated websites with no journalism. No physical newspaper that they were told did have all those things. So, so where this takes me is. Right now, we should be focusing on getting the talented, qualified person that was hired. On board, helping our seniors. And I think there is improvement to be made in the hiring process, but my concerns with specifically forming a. A working group to review the Town Manager Act is. I've heard from a lot of people who just seem to have an axe to grind. They just wanna go after our current town manager, which I don't think is productive. I think if we want our town manager to act differently, we can have that conversation with our town manager. I also think it's important that we not take away the town manager's ability to manage his staff. We think about. The finance director, there are debits and credits and things that need to be managed there, we shouldn't be overseeing that. The town manager needs to be empowered to hire someone who knows how to do that and work with them on a daily basis, just like the rest of the town manager's staff. And the last thing I'll mention is that uh hiring, Jack, as you mentioned, is a minefield of liability issues. So I do worry about where we are today. With this talented, qualified person who's coming on board very soon. And what we're doing to. Create a liability problem for the town by. Not treating that person as talented, qualified person that she is.
Thank you.
Comments?
I I do, but I tend to go last, just to kind of wrap it up.
Everybody else has spoken.
Yeah, no, I I was gonna, thank you, um, I was gonna, David had a follow-up comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up, um, and I think that on the select board members for the comments, um, I I don't see it as politicizing, I see it as elevating. A position. To a greater sense of importance to what it currently has. Um, and as I said before, in the Town Managers Act, the select board currently. Has the final say on the police chief, fire chief, town manager, and the financial director, so there is a director position that is chosen by. The select board. As it is now, and it was just elevated at least, at the very least, another one. Um, and. In the, in the previous hirings, and I I won't go into it fully, but with the police chief and the fire chief. Um, it was the public and the select boards at the time, uh that that chose them. Uh, and they, and I wouldn't trade either of them for any police chief or fire chief in the county. Uh, at this point, uh I think they've, they've both done a a great job, obviously, the the police chief has been here longer s- time. Uh, but who wouldn't like to trade our police chief with maybe the one from Canton, or maybe the one from Stoughton? With all the things that are going on there, and if you don't know, you can Google those two towns and go see what's going on there, so. Uh, the citizens who got involved in the town of Cohasset, as far as I'm concerned, went two for two. Uh, on those hires, uh with the select board at the time, and so this would allow us to go three for three in the future. Uh, by at least elevating that position and any other one that was needed, and it wouldn't be all positions, it would, it at the minimum, it would be the. The senior center director, but. Uh, but I I hear your comments, uh but I don't. In my view, it's not politicizing, it's elevating the position uh to where it should be in the town. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Great, you have another comment?
All right. All right. I know I was part of the fire chief. Uh, Mr. Farag, I wouldn't trade them for all tea in China. They're just outstanding individuals. Here's the thing, we discussed the process. This young lady's been hired. She's coming. And we're gonna be creating. Run the risk of creating a hostile work environment with someone whose only sin is going out and looking for a job and getting hired. Again, it's the process. We agreed that there may be some mistakes in that process that are going to be corrected. But for first to come in to uh. If it happens, Garf, a bit of horniness nest coming in, we don't know the talent that she's gonna bring. It may be something outstanding. But at the end of the day, if it's not. There's things about progressive discipline, or they just don't fit in a big box. But the fact of the matter is. It wouldn't be a two for two or a three for three because she's already been hired. And it's up to us to give her at least a chance. And then work together on the process.
Right. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Um. I think that if. If a different decision had been made, this wouldn't even be on the agenda, and therefore I I do believe that it's. It's politicizing it. Um, and the analogy with the school superintendent. With the director of elder affairs, i- is not quite an apple and an apple in the sense that the school superintendent. Is responsible for fourteen hundred students, over a thousand families, and over three hundred and fifty staff members. And the students, so the process for a school superintendent search is that there are forums with stakeholders. And that's where students from grades from middle school up have a chance to. Talk to the facilitator about what they see in a superintendent. Now. Most kids don't even know what the superintendent of schools does. They know their principals, they know their teachers. But they're part of the process, and that's where their contribution ends, is in the forums. And the forums then um. From the forums and what's important to each group of stakeholders is compiled into a leadership profile. And so I I don't think the director of elder affairs and the school superintendent who. Usually in most municipalities is the highest paid individual in the town. Are i- i- is is really a fair comparison. I have spoken with Mr. Senior several times about process. And I believe if we're still teed up for our next meeting to have a. An HR review of where we are on uh, benchmarking for different positions, where we are on developing a consistent. And fair process. And I think that's what's important. So it's important to me is a consistent and fair process. Um, and if a select board member happens to be part of the search. Um, committee for for various positions, I I don't think that's necessarily a a bad idea. But I do think. I don't think that we would be talking about this. If it weren't, if it weren't for. What has happened. And and um, that concerns me, concerns me on unintended consequences. I did bring it up under the town manager review, but I'm a big believer in unintended consequences. Every decision we make. Excuse me, there's always an unintended consequence. Sorry, and um. You you know, if the community reviews the town manager, does the fire department review the the fire chief? Do do the students review the superintendent? So. You have to think of all of the ancillary what ifs that that may or may not happen when we make decisions like this. And this is, this is a big decision. To go, go back and review it. Um. And and to change um, the town manager act. Because, thank you Paul very much, I appreciate it. Um. So sorry, please forgive me. And so, um. That, that's, that's how I feel about the situation um, and and about this, this particular item. Now. In the course of time, it hasn't been updated since twenty fourteen. If in the course of time, as life changes, for tho- for those of us in Cohasset. Where technology has a bigger role in our lives or a smaller role in our lives. Whether we do expand the senior center or we don't, if our school population um, increases or decreases, how are we gonna manage that? If there, if there are times where we need to look at it in the right light to change for progress. Then that's the appropriate time, not because of what is perceived to be. An unpopular decision. I I just don't think that's the right time to do something of this magnitude. So if there are no other comments. Um, I'll entertain a motion to create a select board working group. To review the town manager act.
And I'm so.
Second.
Second, and we'll just. Do a roll call to dispense with the request afterwards. Okay, um, I. Roll call, please.
Uh, David Farag, uh, yes.
Uh, Jack Creighton, yes.
Paul Grady, no. Chris Plex, no.
Ellen Mar, no. Thank you. I think it's an important conversation we had. I think. Everyone got a chance to speak on it and um. Will look forward to the presentation on. The seventeenth. Is it the seventeenth or the twentieth? Seventeenth. And hopefully that will answer some, some concerns. Did you have something else?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So next up, a boarding committee updates, zoning board of appeal appointments. Um. So we were going to flip-flop a couple of people, and it it's all okay to do that?
Yes, so uh, the the process was that each of the members needed to resign their seats and you. Appoint them to their open seats.
Okay.
Mr. Chittick was resigning as a full member. Uh, and Mr. Watkins as an associate member. Their seats are now open and now you can flip them. That's, that was their intent and that's the, they're now following. They 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 should resign and now you can. If you're appointed tonight, they're gonna be right back in.
Okay. Okay, so um, I'm gonna, I can do it together. It's one motion, right? So I'd like a motion to appoint Woody Chittick as an associate member for an unexpired term until June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And Matthew Watkins as a full member for an unexpired term until June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Creighton moved it, Mr. Grady seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Okay, next. Thank you for your patience, Open Space and Recreation. Um. That's you guys, right? So uh, come up if you wanna. All three come up and bring a chair. That would be great.
They could just make sure they stick, just pass the microphone.
Okay.
Hello.
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 Hi.
Hi.
So um, just just your, your needs and addresses for the record, please.
Sure. So I'm Connie Yapshar, co-chair of Open Space and Recreation, and I live at one forty-one South Main Street, Cohasset.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann Weatherald. I live at forty-nine Rick in Cohasset.
Forty, okay, did you get that, Tracy? Okay, and?
I'm Adam Norman. I'm co-chair and I live at eighty-eight Doane Street.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Um, we've been talking about Open Space and Rec and wanting, wanting to hear, you know, what, what you guys have been. You know about the, the water bottle ban and um, your charge is so much greater and your plan is. I I went through it. I mean, it's very intensive. So if you give us an update, that would be great.
All right, sure. So, Madam Chair, if you will let me uh, read a presentation.
Sure, just be sure to.
Sure. Pardon me?
Should we hand this to them? Do they have reference?
Sure, if, or I was gonna do it after, but. Yeah, yeah, that might be easier. Thank you. Okay, so. Uh, due Madam Chair and select board. The Cohasset Open Space and Recreation Committee is happy to share our activities and ambitions with the Cohasset Select Board. Arming the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-six. Open space plan. The OSRC has worked hard to implement the spirit of the plan. In so doing, the OSRC, that's us, as you know, has successfully worked to improve. Protect and increase recreational opportunities for Cohasset residents as well as support open space. We continue to focus on sustaining the quality of life exemplified in the plan. Through continued focus on the natural resources and recreational amenities that exist or may be needed in the future. Most recently, the OSRC established, marketed, and passed the bylaw, Article twenty-four at town meeting. Banning the sale of single-use plastic water bottles in Cohasset effective January one, twenty twenty-five. The OSRC were to promote the hydration station movement in town. Along with help from the town, the OSRC hosted and manned the annual townwide. Earth Day cleanup event on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. The OSRC further investigated recycling, receptive options for the town and adding more bike racks around town. OSRC commented on the Sawyer Street sidewalk initiative and would appreciate being involved in further such discussions. OSRC also weighed in and provided feedback on the field study now leading to the new tennis courts. And supported the renovation of the Beechwood Playground. OSRC supported and collaborated with Wild Cohasset. In efforts to test and promote a pollinator garden on North Main Street near the pumpkin patch. OSRC became further involved with invasive species management. By actively supporting the work of Wild Cohasset in alerting Cohasset residents to the harmful effects. Of the black swallow word plant. OSRC investigated earlier constructed rain gardens and is following up reeder efficacy and accessibility. In an effort to better open and define Cohasset's wooded for us. OSRC is working to enhance access through GIS, geographic information systems, trail mapping. OSRC is further studying our concerns. Over the privatization of public access points to public lands. OSRC looks forward to working with the town and facilitating the mass DCR grant. For the much-needed replanting of trees in Cohasset. In a community-centric effort to connect directly with the citizens of Cohasset. OSRC has welcomed many guests at our monthly meetings. These guests include, but are not limited to, Annette Sawcheck from the Sandy Beach Association. Mark Giacomo and Carolyn Coffey, Holly Hill Farm. Uh, Jack Buckley, CCSC, George Baumgartner, Lisi Hewitt, and Susan Bryant. Cohasset Harbor Committee and CSCR, John Verras, a resident wanting access to Little Harbor. Charlotte Pa- Talu, Cohasset Conservation Agent. And Sarah Crossan and friend from the Beechwood Playground Advocates. In order to better accomplish our meaningful work, the OSRC would appreciate the select board considering our request. To expand our committee's membership from six to eight members or secondarily. To allow OSRC to have associate members. Moving forward, the OSRC has ambitious goals such as installing new trees around the common. Establishing a clear tree policy that directs a regular funding process to restore trees via the Tree Bank. The February twenty-second version is weak and needs better enforcement. And renewing uh, the Arbor Day Tree City USA status. OSRC is also interested in adding pedestrian and bike paths. Hosting a bike safety program for all ages, creating an environmental resiliency plan. Investigating recycling dividends, creating a list of adjoining nature path walking areas. Adding to our website and banning the use of disposable plastic fast food containers. We thank the Cohasset Select Board and the Town Manager for supporting our mutual endeavors to improve, protect. And increase recreational opportunities for Cohasset residents as well as supporting Cohasset's goal of open space. Sincerely, Open Space and Recreation Committee.
Well said.
Thank you.
Very well.
Mr. Grady has a question.
Forgive me for not. Being up in charge. I see open space. Sounds to me like you're doing a yeoman's job uh, at adding to existing open space. Are you looking to add any? Open space in areas? Or areas that are currently open or in danger of being uh, developed? Run that risk, you know, creating more parks in open space. I mean, it seems to me you're doing a lot and. Commendable work. You know, in. Doing work with stuff, the places we already have. What about making new spaces? Improving spaces, saving those spaces. You know, maybe creating a park in there that there's a park, something like that. So. Again, everything you're doing seems to be, it's existing. What about adding and, you know, finding new opportunities?
Sure.
Um, we. Mary Ann went. Um, at one point, we did talk about Wadley Park that's down on um, Jerusalem Road. And adding uh, parking spaces there. So we looked at that to make it more rec- recreational friendly for more people to have access to that beach area. Front. And we were part of that discussion along with conservation for a while. On that, and we decided as a group that it wasn't going to work, that there wasn't enough spaces in that. So we've been approached by different organizations within the. The town about different properties. We've also talked with the Cohasset Conservation. Committee, I think it is. Trust, thank you, about some properties as well. Um, and um. And I think right now we haven't pursued them. Even further, but um. I mean. No, we haven't done, we haven't gone enough further with that at the time, but. There's so many other options. There's so many other things that we've been trying to improve and make recreation more open, such as. The the ball fields, the tennis courts needed a ten, a a. A lot of attention. Before we approach and expand on properties, we actually need to make the current properties workable for everyone. And that's what we've been putting a lot of effort into.
Have you earmarked any properties that, you know, run the potential of perhaps being improved upon?
That's a good question. I don't have that information. We don't have that information here.
So um, for example, Debbie Shad from the Conservation Trust uh, has reached out to us to um, open up more. The uh, trail that leads off of King Street, at the top of King Street, very close to Stop and Shop. There's a trail that I've driven by there hundreds of times. I never knew it existed. And there's actually a little place to park in there. And um, I went with a friend this winter in, and uh, there was high water, so we, we. Were flooded. There was a stone bridge and we couldn't get across it. But Debbie Shad and members of our committee are going to be looking into that. And it is already Conservation Trust property, but it's not being used. It's not being, you know, marketed. So that's an example of something. And then again, what we talked about, um. It's not actually purchasing more. Space, but again, there is. Land and uh, beautiful spaces that are currently, access is being denied. Being made difficult by the privatization of what should be a public access to the, those properties. So we're working on that.
This is good. I wound up in there. I got lost along with my dog. They hang in the library and I started it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Creighton?
Well done. I didn't agree with everything that, that you've done, but I must say that the work down at Beechwood. How long, uh, you know, I'm on my second. Term. We've been working on Beechwood. Since the beginning of time and is finally getting done. You did great work on that. I also like the thing that, you know, it's open space. To make. You know, my mantra has always been conserve Cohasset's character and open space and natural resources are part of that. I like opening up all these hidden parts of Cohasset, which if you don't know they're there or. They've been privatized, the access, I think that's excellent, excellent work. And I think one of the reasons you get a lot of support is um. People love this town. And they love how beautiful it is. And so whatever we can do. To make it more useful. And that also includes like the tennis courts and, and um. You know, Beechwood. So you're doing good work. Keep up the uh. Keep up the good work. And if you need somebody who knows how to use a woodsman's pal, which is a modified machete. To clear trails. You just give.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all your work that you're doing. I, I uh, I just want to ask regarding. It might fall under the tree bank, uh, but I know in one of your meetings, they talked about doing a tree audit. Uh, and I didn't know uh, if if that's ongoing or something could be in the future or if it's been completed, it's an update where that is. And then what's, what treatment also for the communities?
Sure. What happened? Dee, one of our members, Deirdre Riley, who was unable to come today because of sports with her kids, is our point person on the trees, but.
Yes, I'd say we were a bit dismayed by some of the clearing of trees because we've read through the Cohasset tree policy and it seems pretty clear that any tree that's fell needs to be replaced with something similar. And that hasn't been happening. We look at the Sawyer Street sidewalk as an example. We counted seventy trees that were cut down and none were replanted. So we want to figure out a way that we can ensure enforcement of that tree policy and and continue to have trees planted wherever appropriate. And we also mentioned the Arbor Day. We're going to get some trees planted as part of that annual effort and we have some other trees plantings in the works.
All right, Chris, why don't the trees get planted? Why don't the trees? I swear. We planted nice elm trees on, uh, very young saplings. We planted
We planted
and we have an elm, a red common. We have an elm at Willright, and we have a sugar maple at Willright too.
They're growing very well, but we would like to add more. There's a tree bank that has enforcement on it, but it seems it's, I think that's through the Conservation Committee. And it doesn't seem like or we need to find out more. We're having, I think, from what I understand, not enough funds go into that tree bank that get backed into real live trees being planted. And there needs to be we would like to look into more accountability and reasoning why that is. I think Charlotte is planning to come to our next meeting and she's on conservation. And we can ask her more about how that follow-up is happening. Again, Dee Riley is our member and she's in touch on the tree issue, but the tree is a big issue for us because shade and the lack of people need shade and comforting. And our town is, for every storm, many trees come down. They aren't being replaced. So we would like to replace many trees in this community.
What?
Just to confirm myself, I do agree with everything that you've done. So thank you for all your efforts. Wanted to ask you a little bit about, you mentioned you were thinking of adding two members, which I think is wonderful. One of the things that we bump into sometimes is boards sometimes can't get enough members for their open seats. So two questions. One, do you think you'd fill the seats? And if you got those extra members, what could you do with the extra two sets of hands?
Could I interject one kind of to that point? Um, my experience in conservation was that having associate members is great training. And also, to Chris's point about lack of a quorum, if you expand it, then the quorum gets bigger and you'll have a lot of meetings that you can't open. But if you add the two people as associates, you're training them for two years. And also quite honestly, it's easier to get somebody to agree to accept the great honor of being an associate. And then once they're in and they're gonna feel for it. So that would be my only suggestion. And sorry to kind of agree with you, Chris.
Yeah, we're very open to adding two associate members. We already have two applicants who are very willing and to and ready to join our committee. One has already officially applied. Another was told that we didn't have enough space, but it's already helped us a number of initiatives. And so we would love to add the two of them. We have currently five members needed to form a quorum. We only have six members. And so it's not always easy to fulfill that quorum. We've been fortunate enough to do it in most cases. But adding a couple more and keeping the quorum at five would probably be the best case scenario, but certainly we would gladly accept having two associate members.
I had a couple of questions and just had a brain melt. So the, your plan, two hundred and ninety-eight pages is coming to an end in two thousand and twenty-six. Do you envision? You know, wait, no, when do you start planning for the next six-year plan?
Yeah, we're already planning. I think Chris Senior, we just had a conversation last week about hiring, I believe, the same consulting firm that put together the last plan. We think not a lot will change because a lot of the information in that nearly three hundred pages isn't going to change. It's probably just a matter of updating some numbers, but you know, I think that's in process. And hopefully funded already, I believe.
So the plan is to bring financial ten million and less for funding our insult after the new year and then run the plans or we're done by the end of twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And it's state mandated that we have an OSCR, right?
It's stated if you want to get certain grants, so you don't have to have it, but if you don't get it, it's good to have.
Okay, okay. And then my, my second comment is, and it's going to be a curveball to everyone sitting at the table, but the town owns a parcel of land on three A just south of Pond Street on the, on the right-hand side that used to be a nursery and has been sitting there for quite some time. And I know I believe it's ten acres. I believe a large portion of it is wetlands. But I don't know, that is a space that, I mean, we don't have any plans for that, do we?
Well, actually, in fact, some of that is going to be transformed, permanent parkland is part of the Willright project, which you're going to hear about in a minute.
Okay.
So now we had conversations with Trust, Conservation Trust.
Right.
As well as for all the police stations, they have a store and that, we have a home now, so I know that was bought because we had an agricultural easement on it. It was a nice nursery.
Yeah.
So you're right, there's uplands in the middle, but it's surrounded by wetlands. Conservation Trust does land on either side of it. So I think they had visions at some point of doing something bigger. So it would be a good time to have the conversations part of this development and explain.
And I might add that it's very urgent that action be taken because that came before Concom when I was chair. And it looks a lot wetter than it is. So that could be developed. Um, it looks like it's all wetland, but when we had it tested, it's developable. And that's a wonderful piece of land. So guys have your marching for us.
Right.
No, I just, when we talk about, you know, our town is so finite in size and you know, where your home's going to go, where Mr. Senior commented earlier in the evening that there's not going to be a lot of developments, you know, new growth is going to come from people adding on to their homes, increasing their assessed values and and we can't grow land. So, you know, where do we find, to Mr. Brady's point, more open space? Three A is very well traveled. I don't think anyone would think of that spot as being somewhere where you go for hiking woods. But who knows? You know? I, I think it's.
I think there was a discussion with the Conservation Trust because they had, they had bought it in two sections that they were looking at acquiring it, but I don't recall where that discussion went. And of course, we can reach out to Debbie Shad, who leads that organization and check in with her on that. But that is a busy road. However, we've seen in Waymouth, they've done some redevelopment of properties as well to make more recreation. We can look at that as well.
It was a wonderful nursery. It was sad.
Really, I suppose.
Yes, that's what he goes, right?
Yep. And I, I think, I know that there's going to be a state paving project, not that far up on three A, but from Schofield South. Is that correct?
From the situat line up to beyond Beechwood, that, that part's going to be done first.
Okay, so heading, so heading, heading north to Beechwood and three A. Okay.
Is that where Schofield is?
It's a little bit
I don't know if it goes all the way to Schofield or I, I don't remember. I know it goes to Beechwood. I'm not sure if it goes beyond Beechwood. It's a road narrow.
Right. And I know Brian Joyce mentioned something about putting the, some sidewalks were going in, make
That's pond. That's pond and cane potentially. I think that's part of the committee's ongoing.
Okay, okay. But, but so so when Mr. Joyce was here discussing the paving plan, because the state is doing it, you know, we did ask him to go to DOT and, and see if they would take that speed a little bit down because it goes from thirty-five from the situat line to fifty right after you cross over Beechwood. And then it goes to forty-five by Stop and Shop all the way to the Hingham line. And it's a, it is a very busy road and my opinion should be thirty-five, but we'll, we'll see what it comes. It's not our, our decision. It's the state decision.
Um, just to add, as part of our plan, I think it's required that we receive feedback from the community on what they want as well. So that will probably be part of our process with, if we hire Beals and Thomas or whoever organization that we hire with, but we'll be outreach to the community and asking what other updates they want. I think we've achieved many things that were desired over the last few years, particularly the renovations. So we look forward to keep doing our great jobs here.
Yeah, great. Yes, sir.
So I think you guys do great work. I just think maybe, you know, thinking outside the box in areas that have been technically overdeveloped, like we have on Pleasant, which is a big building. You have areas downtown, even a park, like behind that, you have Two Smith, which is now empty, a lot have changed. And I don't think there's much you can do. Little places that maybe people find a park, just through Two Smith, they're just up close by. Not for any other reason. But, you know, up the hill, there's areas that could be just little green spaces. That's, you know, that's what I envisioned open space. Again, I don't know your chart, so.
Oh, up what hill are you referring to? What, what, up what hill are you referring to?
Oh, no, 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 I was just saying, I was down at that area because they built up all the townhouses. Like I tell you, one thing I drive by where the old JJs used to be.
Right.
You know, it's all stuffed now.
Yeah.
And I, I'd be honest with you, selfishly speaking, I miss walking my dog and seeing the kids playing, having ice cream. People are playing at night. Sort of some of what was left in town. And it's all going away. So again, you know, if I walked down, I look over where they wanted to build all those condominiums next to it. Like sitting, the whole dynamic's changed. There's a stream queue there.
Right, right. Right.
That'd make a nice park, great place. You have a town parking lot right there that people would walk over.
Oh, so oh, that's the area right next to your house. So that little pocket park that should be a pocket park, you mean places like that?
The one right down? Yeah, it's right off that street.
Yeah, right, okay.
I think that's
But I'm not quite sure.
I wasn't leading into that. I'm just saying, because I see it. So I can, right now it is close by. I'm not trying to throw a conflict of interest out there. The one that's right next to my house, about four doors down. All right, so I'll leave it at that. And but I'm just saying, just looking outside the box. So you know, not the one right next to my house. I'd rather you concentrate on ones that were further away from my house, actually, just to be on the safe side. So we're not doing a conflict of interest, right? The ones right next to it. You know exactly what I was talking about. All right, so.
No, but I like your idea of a pocket park. It's small, small places where people that don't necessarily have lots of mobility can easily access. And I even heard at my church this past week, people were sharing and a woman who lives at the elderly housing behind the place was saying how she misses having, not having a garden. And she would just love to go sit somewhere on a bench, you know, where there could be flowers and so I, I think that's great ideas.
Like a community garden.
Oh, yes, that was all
We had, we talked about that one point.
That came up today in our discussion.
Right.
Uh, one of our members suggested, what about the town of Cohasset having a community garden, vegetable garden? And that's something that we've never tried before.
Fantastic.
Yeah, wonderful.
Okay, so Chris, do we need to approve via a vote to expand their board to eight members?
Um, yes, and what I would suggest is I could work with Adam and Connie and Mary Ann and get your proposal shortly, kind of like the stuff for the Fort Myers Estuary Committee and and also we appoint ten appointed members.
Okay. That, that's fine. I mean, we're thrilled. We've had two committees come before us this year that have contracted their boards because of challenges getting a quorum. Um, so the fact that you want to expand, not only speaks to your cause, but speaks to you know, your committee and how, how people are engaged in, and how you work together. So yeah, so Chris will give it, get us a proposal. We'll get everyone. So Adam, you said someone is interested but hasn't applied. If they could just get that information to Tracy?
Yep.
So we have everything that, that we need. And we'll make a final decision on the seventeenth.
Excellent.
Is that, is that okay, Chris?
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
I think we have the updated members from the other committees, the three committees that have slots on the open space. And we have the updates on that too.
Right.
You have to follow the improvement.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do a package on seven.
We'll do the package on the seventeenth then.
Super.
Great, great.
Great.
I just wanted to add, like, we're most probably known by Earth Day, but we're always looking for other events or programs to get involved, like creating a bike program or but our Earth Day program is probably our most recognized. And over time, we've collected over eight tons of trash in this community. So we continue to do that as well. But we've done tremendous work in this town. So we'll look at your properties and
No, don't look at that.
As well. But I just wanted you to know all the the little minor things that
Well, that's, that's not minor. It's, you know, it's a town tradition, much like you know, the farmer's market on Thursdays. I mean, everybody knows about Earth Day and
Well, then we've created that tradition.
Right, right.
Love them to know more about.
With the town.
And I doubled down on that. So people have talked about getting it together. It wasn't any group that was ready to own it.
Yeah.
You know, and only ever sort of coming with Peter was like, we want this. And, and it's been great. I mean, because it's just, people come out, they help clean up, they do all kinds of, it's just, it's a great day. And it doesn't have to be big or elaborate, right? But it's so engaging. Uh, it's been a great event, so I thank you.
We do have one problem that with the Earth Day dumpster that we should bring to their attention.
Well, but we can get down to that problem. Come and meet with us and figure it out.
Okay, okay.
Very good.
I can see every part of town should have a green base, like a little park, a little place where you can sit.
Yes.
I use that as an example, but I'm used to it.
Yeah.
It's not an advocate, their advocacy, but I think that every part of town should have you know, a little pocket.
I like that.
Just a stop if you're walking down, you're on your bike or you're doing anything, pull over and
Pocket parks.
I think urban environments are more conscious of that because the lack of, but again, realizing that even within suburban communities such as ours, there are people that can't necessarily go a far distance and just want to get out for whatever reason, with a baby or elderly or whatever. So so thank you. So would you like everybody to have a copy?
Thank you.
Welcome.
If you haven't been able
Sure, sure. I have one for her. Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for sorry, we were a little delayed.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, so all right. Next up is the budget message. This is just a draft. We are a little early, Chris, on it or, or or we're not early? Okay. I don't mean early in the agenda. I mean, early in the season.
It's not, it's never too early to have this.
Yeah, so, so what, what I find challenging about it is that it's the budget message for FY twenty-six, which begins July one. But we haven't done our goals. And, and so either so then, then our goals, when we do our goals for FY twenty-six, need to correlate to the budget message.
Well, yes, and some of the goals that you want to roll during the year. So some part of the sustainable end fiscal goals are now a longer term life experience.
Right, right. So I just, I honestly, I took last year's budget message that we had adopted and I made some, some adjustments. I'm sure there's typographical errors. I'm sure there's FY twenty-five in there in some places. And so this is our first draft. I don't know if anyone has specific comments.
I've been, I've, I've, I've read it over. And thank you for trying to put this together. And I'm trying to figure, I mean, there's a lot of things operated for level service. I mean, operating budget would be support level services and, and all of this kind of stuff. But I'm trying to figure out exactly things like what our gross revenues are going to be. I think we're going to have some some issues going forward. And I'm not quite sure, and I'm not, and a professional accountant. Uh, but I'm not quite sure. Uh, but I'm not quite sure. If, if we're in a situation where we would have these figures audited, and I know we've been through a couple of. Financial directors, if we don't have, have one, in my understanding is Chris, you're the effectively the acting. Financial manager in the absence of permanent, is, is that how it works? Because we don't have a financial director.
Well, it's a big project that has on it every year.
Right.
And you just had your powers and strength going on, you know, I'm a cling on it. In fact, just last week, and I have a public announcement. We just won another award for the transparency of the financials. So the town has consistently done that and consistently continued to do that. We do have an assistant town count and all the other positions are full. At the moment, I'm the acting finance director, which means I oversee the whole world.
So I'm, I'm not the town count. Okay, well, I, I was looking through this for some more specifics on that, but would you're telling me there's audit and a different thing and I'm aware of. But you are. We do or we do not have a finance director? Or are you the acting?
I am the acting.
Okay. How long has that been that way?
Uh, since. Last, yeah, last fall, I guess it's been. Remember, last year.
And that, and the person who left then, how long have they been in the job?
I'm sorry.
Person who.
Jack, yeah, this is, this is about our budget message, not about staffing and personnel. So. So let's just.
That's, that's never the time. All right, go ahead.
To grind an ax.
So, so um. You, you know, to, to Jack's point, the, the first page. You know, points one and two are, are pretty perfunctory. Um, and they are, um, but, but it is how we build the budget and it is the things that we as a town believe in. So I, I did question it like, well, everybody should know this, but I think when you, when you publish a budget message from a board. Um, you, you have to say that, that, you know, we do anticipate a uniform tax rate. We do anticipate level services. So that we have complete transparency, even if it's redundant from year to year. And then um. Added in um. The continuation of our goals on thirty five King Street, forty one Highland Avenue at the Town Hall, um, what happens to that building? And we have a goal in FY twenty five, and this is what I was kind of getting to on asset management. It's in FY twenty five without budget to support it. So I felt I would throw it out here as point number five to continue that goal. And incorporate it into the budget. So that goal is supported.
Well, we actually do have software that does it. I, I think that if we need to upgrade that, that would require a conversation.
Right, well, not just, not just software, but kind of the conversation that, that you and Nick and. Um, Brian and I had about what, what are the, what are the additional maintenance and things? And, and what do they really need in their budget and not just last year plus two percent?
September seventeen. Which then will have that.
Right, right. So they're going to be here. So.
An ongoing maintenance budget rolling forward. So we have the money to maintain our buildings. We have money to maintain. You know, we have the streets, we have the, I'm sorry, interrupt.
No, that's okay.
Because that's part of the goals is going forward. We can put a lot of building and change a window. We can upgrade the town hall. So things like that. Instead of from bar and Peter to pay for a common intended. So those, that's all I'm.
So, so we, we do, and I, I think, uh, I think it's going to be good to have more public. Uh, transparency for the great work artists are doing. Uh, solving what they do doesn't have noticed, but it's hugely important. The schools have been a great recipient.
Right.
Uh, that's that other one, that's two, the one we're in right now. So, uh, uh, so, yes, I, I, and I, I think the seventeenth again.
Well, that's very helpful because that's what I was. Driving at, because when I read this, I was going, and I would agree with um, what Ellen had to say. It is by nature a little perfunctory. You know, and I look forward to getting a little bit more in depth of how these things are going to get paid for and all that. But it wasn't meant as a, as a criticism, just a comment. Um, how important it is for the select board to really understand. You know, how our, our, our town finances are, are working and the various departments and challenges and costs of a dollar or millions are going to be needed.
Okay, so um. It, it, it is, it is getting late and um. I am very happy to accept individual comments if people want to email me. I don't, I can't, I'm not in a program right now where I can type into this to make those corrections. And send me edits comments and I can update the draft and we can vote on it at the next meeting. If that's acceptable, unless there's any easy things right now for me to change. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I think actually we only had a discussion on it, not even on a, on a vote. Okay, next, report from Town Hall Working Group.
Okay, great. We met again. Yeah, I wanted to just clarify something. We're not looking to buy any buildings.
That's the impression I got from reading your study.
No, what we're looking to do, I understand what you said about we're not looking to do anything. We're trying to formulate ideas. I mean, we've had Town Hall up three times at that, struck out.
Agent.
Each and every time.
Okay, let, let's just, we'll have Mr. Grady finish his report. We're not in a dialogue here.
Not discussing it really, but we've put together a committee that is as diverse as we can get. We have people that have been on the Town Hall committees prior to. We do have conservation. We have people from um. Architects and we have uh, construction. And we're trying to formulate an idea that the town is going to find acceptable to preserve forty one Highland Avenue. I could, I'm sure you've seen it in its current state. It's rather horrible. And that didn't have to be. We had that done. We had it wrapped up and just didn't happen to pass. And that's all right. It's town voted, the town voted. So we've got to find avenues. The town's not too keen on spending a lot of money. I, I think this is a case of Town Hall fatigue. We all do. We're trying to come up, come up with something that will make that building an asset to the community. I'm not discussing it right now. You always do, but go ahead. What's your question?
There could be money to, from state and federal to rehab that building.
If you could find that, present that to the committee, I'd be all, I'd be happy as a clan.
Can you take that offline with Mr. Grady, please? Thank you.
All right, so send it to me. I'd be happy to discuss with you, but I'm just giving you an update as to what we're doing. So we're trying to find something feasible, economically possible, that will serve the building, right? Build the building and make it an asset to the community, be it a cultural center, be it something along those lines. Doors are open that you can vote in, that you can have proms in, that you can have meetings in, that you can have the uh, the. The farmers' day up there, bathrooms, things like that. So. Uh, again, we've got three times at bat with it. Each one of them has struck down. The town didn't want to spend the money and it's true. And so we're looking at every alternative we can to try to preserve it instead of seeing it fall down around like it is now. That's all. And I'd be happy to hear from you. Very sure that if you have that, you know that we can find some money, I'd be happy to hear. I'd like to hear.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? When's your next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's until next week.
Next week?
This week.
Just a point of information. Um, what point of the uh, Town Hall, many. Uh, uh, trying to go back in the meeting, so the minutes I didn't see on that.
It's a working group, Jack. So there's no point, there's no charge.
We, we talked about the individuals, the type of people that would be a, appropriate for the working group. Um, and people volunteered once they heard that, that we were doing this. Um, it's a working group. It doesn't need to be appointed or selected by the select board.
Okay, so. Who did?
We all did. You were, you went in, but. May have been checked out then.
So, um.
You know.
Yeah, but let's, let's not.
Could I, could I ask Madam Chair that, to remind um, the board members that. That snide personal comments are beneath the dignity of this town. Thank you.
Just.
I stand corrected.
Okay, um. Okay.
Say it's a working group, it's discussed at this table. Reached out to different people and that was uh.
I just, it was never mentioned to me and I was one of the ones who. Um, a number of years ago suggested that um, hiving off the historic Town Hall into a separate entity. Um, made a lot of sense, which is what I understand is the recommended procedure of most of the people. Similar reason I brought it up.
Well, I, I believe it was, it was discussed um.
Many times.
Extensively here. We had a public forum this past spring on Town Hall slash forty one Highland Avenue. And that, that group came forth um, and volunteered and they had some ideas on programming and. They've already been working on fundraising and um. I don't, I don't think there's anyone that's volunteered to you, Paul, or to you, Chris, who's wanted to be part of this that has been denied. So if people have asked to be on it, it's certainly out here on every one of our meetings. So it's publicized. Okay, Town Manager update.
Uh, Michelle Stolvis and, and virtual, while, while, while we're getting her to join us. September eleventh is next week, so the annual September eleventh memorial will take place at nine AM on Common at the flagpole. So um, again, it's a, it's, it's a structured, but informal memorial. So if anyone, anyone can join, rain or shine, hopefully it'll be sunny. And it'll be again, next Wednesday at nine AM, gather at the flagpole on the north side. And there's Michelle.
Hey, Michelle, thanks for staying up.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, she's going to do it. Okay.
Yep, so um, the first update I believe you're looking for is for Wheelwright Park. Um, so we started this process back in twenty twenty two, which with conversations regarding. A public safety need for a monopole um, to gain access for the north side of town. Um, and this is a, this is a public safety. Project we've been working on. So in twenty twenty three, we issued um, of. We, we petitioned for a chapter ninety seven license. As of late Ju- um, July, we received the chapter ninety seven license through the legislature. Um, during that process, we also put out a bid for a thirty year lease for the cell tower. Um, we have selected a vendor for the cell tower. We are in contract negotiations with them. Um, as a matter of fact, next week, we are going to walk the site with their engineer. To see how we can minimize any effects of um, tree removal and just minimize the passageway that we need to. To maintain the site. Um, this is an exciting project. It's been going on for a couple of years now. Um, you will, I'll be able to give you more information in the coming weeks after we meet with the engineer on site. But we anticipate that this project is going to take probably still about another eighteen months to complete. So this is the initial stages of the actual construction phase and um, we will update you accordingly as things progress.
Great, great. Thank you, Michelle.
Sure.
Yeah, but. And this one was uh, uh, so that's, we're clear with people is that we'll be putting a, a cell tower so we can get better service. Uh, it'll go up in Wheelwright Park. And so for those areas of town where the service drops, it's with ring the assistant in helping that. Um, is, is that correct? Is that's what I want to.
That is correct.
And everybody sitting at home, if you've had your cell phone drop off, when you've gone down Forest Ave or. Jerusalem Road or all the people who live down there in that section of town in North Cohasset, is that this project. Uh, will be able to bring cell coverage to that area and that area of town, which is sorely in need of it for many years.
Correct.
Thank you, Michelle.
Sure.
You'll keep us updated with milestones as they occur.
Sure. So after next week, we'll have a major milestone that we'll be able to update the board with.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well done. Time team, she's not going to go away.
Okay.
So last week, I got the chance to look at the part of the NSBA to walk through the Oscar roof project. So they came down, we did a virtual, uh, it was a virtual meeting and then uh, a onsite. Uh, a couple of members of the team came down, walked the roof, walked the building to see what the leaks were. Nick and his team were great. Met the new principal and that. Uh, I think it was a very favorable meeting. Uh, we, we laid out, I prepared them up at their present school, uh, schools, explaining the, how the approval processes work. And, and the funding that, that the town has approved to the, the school, a special stabilization fund. Uh, so I think we checked all the boxes, the fingers crossed, uh, NSBA will announce the designated repair program recipients or partners uh, in the end of October.
Oh, wow.
Uh, and that will then be kind of a rocket. So you have to get a vendor on board, get a special time meeting for funding for when we study. Uh, but a bid in the, in winter and then the annual town meeting for funding for the roof. And that would be constructed from summer. So they said, they say accelerated, they truly need to accelerate. So. So that's the end of it.
That's great. Thank you.
Back to you, back to you, Michelle.
Okay, um, so an update on the projects we're working on. So the Beechwood Playground, I don't know if anyone's driven by, but all of the equipment is in place as of today. Um, they're completing some drainage work um, around the perimeter. The port in place surface is due to go in the week of September twenty third. However, due to them completing the installation. Um, faster than anticipated, we're looking to see if we can push that back to see if we can get a vendor on site to push that back. Um, to possibly next week. Um, so the pro, that playground will be completed. Um, they are also working on the basketball courts at Beechwood. You'll see over the next couple of days, you'll see some concrete being poured there. And that is for the passageway between the basketball court and the playground. Um, you'll also see the concrete being poured under the shade structure. Once that is complete, you'll see the um, asphalt being pulverized and the new court being poured. So that project's moving along nicely and I'm hoping to have it completed and all wrapped up by the second week in October. Um, as far as Millican tennis courts, that's also moving along on schedule. The weather has been great. Um, it's really cooperating for this project. So they removed the large retaining wall. Um, and they've also removed the retaining wall in the back of the courts that not many people saw. Um, it was just um, comprised of a bunch of riprap. We're actually putting a nice stone wall back there. Um, something I do want to highlight is the week of September twelfth. The surveyor will be on site to put survey markings down. Um, we did have the land surveyed and they're just going to go out and put the markers down. That week, we will notify the um, the property owners. That the surveyor will be on site. Something else I'd like to talk about is the pouring of the concrete quartz. So due to the complexity of these quartz, um, and where the, in the amount of concrete we are pouring. Um, they are asking for permission to set up the concrete trucks to start lining them up on Bancroft at four thirty AM. Um, the trucks will line up from the, the bathroom concession area. Um, all the way to the courts. Um, they will not start pouring until five AM, but they do want to stage the area starting at four thirty. We did have a meeting with um, Chief Quigley and Officer Lorenz today to talk about um, police details and a traffic plan. Um, and, and they're both on board with having two details officers there to make sure that. It goes seamlessly and this would be for two days. It would be one day, one day off and then the following day. It's an early start. I think it's a huge benefit to the community to have it done this way. Um, it was recommended by our site superintendent to have it done this way because they're estimating approximately ten concrete trucks every hour. From the period of five AM until three thirty in the afternoon. So um, I know it's, it's an inconvenience for the neighbors and we will make sure they're notified. But I just wanted to get some feedback from the board because of the start time being so early.
I'm all for it. And I think that, you know, we should publicize it to the, to the supporters or the neighbors. But benefits more than outweigh the inconvenience. It's a day on and a day off. Uh. I don't think you'll get a lot of pushback from that.
Okay. Um.
I think you've done a wonderful job, Michelle. It's been very, very difficult and contentious and there's all kinds of competing neighborhood interests. Um, interests of the people who use those facilities. It's been a long and difficult time and we're getting it done successfully and. You know, it, it's always good to celebrate when government is, is successful.
I would say when, whenever one has surgery, you want it to be painless and as quick as possible. Uh, and this.
And to somebody else.
Yeah, just somebody else. And, and with this, uh, I would say to, that. To make it as, as, as quick as possible, uh, with, with process that you're doing as long as the public and the, uh, the butters are. You know, have been noticed regarding it, uh, so they can make proper adjustments to their schedules. Uh, to do it as quickly as possible. It's gonna, it's gonna lessen. The issues of the interruptions there, because otherwise, without doing it this way, it's gonna be a longer process. Uh, and so the inconvenience would be more if we do not go with this process.
Mr. Clacks? Nothing. Um, so I just have a couple of comments. Oh.
Sorry. This is my fault.
Like, does this mean something else now that I don't know what it means? Okay, sorry, a little punchy. Um. So I assume that the one day on, one day off, next day on are weekdays.
Yes.
Okay, and since we are, um, in session with school. Those parking spaces are used as overflow parking. I know a lot of high school kids park there. So I have. Have one request to make sure that, um. The, the high school, Brian Scott has made aware and so that he can advise the students that, um, parking. On, on those two days. Um, will not be available for student parking. That would be number one. And number two is with the. Truck, ten trucks coming every hour beginning at four thirty, again regarding schools, I mean, the most direct route is down three A. And down Pond Street. To Bancroft Road. However. For there's a period of time, you know, where the buses are and parents are in drop-off mode and. Pickup mode in the afternoon and with ten dump trucks going through, just maybe. I would request you ask Chief Quigley, like. What can be done to root around that or what can be done? To, to redirect the schools. I know at the end of the day, they can only make a right-hand turn out of that administrative lot, but. I, I just think it, it could become a big. A big disaster and your dump truck, you know, your, your mixers could get stuck in traffic and then, then you just have this domino effect of, of ten trucks.
Right.
You follow what I'm saying?
I do, I do. So I, I will regroup with, um, Chief Quigley. And Officer Lawrence and see what we can do to mitigate that because we were thinking mitigation on North Fork in the corner of Bancroft, but. We may need more mitigation down Pond Street, so we'll make sure that we have, um. The proper plan in place.
Yep, just for those two segments of time. Where school starts, school ends. Um, and, and then I would assume if the trucks start lining up at four thirty, they're going to be running.
They are gonna be running.
Okay, so I would just make sure when you notify the neighbors that the neighbors know, you know, that the trucks will be running and, um. So, so that they're, they're aware.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
Cause that, that's probably more of the disruption is the sound at four thirty than the actual visual look of, of the trucks.
Right, right. Okay, I will make sure that's all done. Um. And so the sports wall, so we had a call a week ago about the sports wall. The, the original location that we thought we could put the sports wall in, um, we're having some conservation challenges with the area. Um, we've identified a couple of other locations. We are gonna go before the Rec Commission, September seventeenth is their next meeting. Um, so we're gonna, um, talk to them about some other locations or, you know, the potential to put it. On the same lo, same location, just, um, positioned differently. Um. And see what their appetite is for that. Um, but I don't want people to think we forgot about the sports wall. Um, we do have the funding in place for the wall itself. Um, so that's moving along as well, um.
Where was the sports wall supposed to go?
The sports wall is supposed to go on Sawyer Street, um, in the green space, and it was supposed to be tucked in closer to. Um, the train tracks where the train tracks are. However, due to the new riverfront bylaw, um. We're, we're facing some challenges with. Um, permitting it where we thought we could permit it.
But it's all, it's on the, it's on the fence side. In other words, it's within the, the boundaries of the, our fenced-in area, right? It's not going inside.
No, no, it would be, it would be within the boundaries. And the only, the only other.
Yeah, all that area is already, already disturbed. We already have basketball courts and everything else there, right?
Right, right. So because it was disturbed before this riverfront, um, bylock went into effect. So we're looking at many different things and I think the big decision now is, um. Do we go through the whole permitting process to find out in the end that we can't do it or do we just change the location? Um, to ensure that money's being well spent. We're still getting the product that we want. Um, so that's just a decision we're gonna have to talk through with the Rec Commission.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
Sure, just one other quick update and then, and then I'll, oh, we done? Okay.
No, 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 please, please update.
Okay, so one thirty-five Crink, King Street really quickly. Um, so we are interviewing designers tomorrow. Um, we've narrowed it down to two design firms, um. We will have more information at the next select board meeting as to who we recommend moving forward with, but this project is moving quickly. Um, and as you know, both chiefs are involved with this committee, um, and. Hopefully we'll find a designer that fits our needs, um, and be able to report that at the next meeting.
Excellent. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, um, select board comments. Start with Mr. Brady.
Um, just one. We've all heard what happened in Trojan today. We had a moment of silence. In that light. I'd really like to do a push forward that we have a presence at all of our schools. These are our kids. Someone who's there throughout the day, a police presence. Just a body that could, you know, this kid was fourteen years old. He came up that street and saw this officer there. Might have thought again. Seen too much of this and I, I'm pushing this out there that I would like to see police presence at the Osgood, at least on the Osgood Deer Hill campus. And up the high school. I know we have it up there, but segregates the other two. It's just some woods. There's a lot of this and I think that any proactive step we could take. To eliminate would be something that, uh. They're just thinking about in short order. It's my comments for now.
Thank you, Mr. Clacks.
Uh, nothing to add tonight, but I will say that I agree with Mr. Brady. It's, if nothing else, worth the conversation with Chief Quigley to hear with Chief things.
Mr. Creighton?
Well, I think it's. That the conversation with Chief Quigley would be very productive. I'd be very surprised if he hasn't already figured it out. And to the extent that it requires select board approval to fund it, uh. My vote would be affirmative. And other things, as we. Wind down the summer and we move into the fall, um. It's always good to remember how fortunate it is that all of us to live in a town and community. Like Cohasset, as beautiful as Cohasset, but part of Cohasset's character is also the lively and engaged. Political process where citizens really are concerned. And sometimes the discussions are spirited, but wouldn't, isn't it better to have spirited discussions? Than no discussions or people who say, oh, that's okay, for very, very fortunate. And as we cherish the physical beauty of our town, let's also cherish the intellectual. Beauty of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I just second echo the comments by Mr. Brady. Safety comes first when it comes to our schools. And I have no further comments.
Um. Mr. Creighton, you kind of took what I was gonna say, but you said it much more eloquently. I'd like to thank everyone for bearing through this very long meeting. We had a lot, but we had a lot of. Very good conversation, good debate. Um, if we all agreed on everything every time, we would be pretty boring. So, um. Um, I don't think boring is that anything will ever be called. Um. On that note, then, I would like to ask for, oh, approval of minutes, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
Absolutely, so second.
Okay, David moved, Paul second, all in favor? Thank you. No topics. Can I have an adjournment plea, uh, motion adjourned? Mr. Brady motioned at nine forty-nine, Mr. Plucks seconded. Thank you all very much. Oh, yes. Roll call, please.
Chris Plucks, aye.
Paul Brady, aye.
Eleanor, aye.
Jack, great.